Want to get started? You guys ready?
Ready.
Roll call.
Mr. Daniel.
Present.
Mrs. Powell.
Present.
Mr. Blevins.
Present.
Mr. Hollis.
Present.
Mrs. Potts.
Present.
Okay, pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free and equal republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as God created.
Treasurer's recommendations. It is recommended that the minutes of the March 21st, 2016 regular meeting of the Western Reserve Local Board of Education and the minutes for the special meeting held on March 7th, 8th, 10th, and 28th be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Blevins.
Yes.
Mr. Hollis.
Yes.
Mrs. Potts.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes. Motion carried. It is recommended that the March 2016 financial reports be approved and the March listing of bills be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Blevins.
Yes.
Mr. Hollis.
Yes.
Mrs. Potts.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes. Motion carried. It is recommended that the voluntary student accident, sickness, and football insurance be renewed with National Guaranteed Trust Life Insurance Company administered by Love Insurance Agency for the 2016-2017 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hollis.
Yes.
Mrs. Potts.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Blevins.
Yeah.
Superintendent's recommendations. It is recommended that the board authorize the superintendent and treasurer to contact American Business Center concerning the upgrade of copiers in the high school and elementary school offices.
This is the program that we've, basically the two that we have in there, well actually all of ours are leased to by. So basically with what the information I'm giving you, I think it's $150 more a month. And that's state pricing, so it's the same no matter where we go. That would give us new copiers in the two offices. We've had a lot of breakdowns. Our worry is with final exams, end of the year awards, we print our own graduation um...
Diplomas.
Uh, programs.
Oh.
Uh, you know, we get a breakdown and we're trying to do those out last week. They, they'll, even though our lease is up in August, I think, technically.
Yes, September.
We can get the new machines, so um, they, we had met with them back in February and that was the pricing. And I talked to them today and told them we were going to talk about it before meeting and I'll get back to them. And um, for basically an additional $154 a month.
So basically renewing new leases for new machines.
Just on the two new machines.
The two office machines.
Okay, and they're taking those back and trading.
No, they're ours.
Okay.
So we just put them, where they're not used as much because they're still working, they just can't keep up with the volume of the offices.
And ABC really does a great job maintenance-wise. In fact, we probably put the whammy on because the day we met with them, we raved about how good they were with maintenance and I think they've been out almost weekly since. But it's just because those copiers are maxed out. They, you know, they have a lifetime.
Yeah.
A million copies or something like that.
Oh, okay.
And we're at like 999,000 something. So they'll still be serviceable for limited things, but when somebody's trying to run, you know, and they're pretty complex copiers, they'll do the, the program type things and they'll do um, you know, a lot of different types of jobs, not just run single copies, staple and sort, two-sided, all that. So um, you know, we just thought rather than get into buying.
So moved on that.
Second.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
It is recommended that the board approve the purchase of nine radios from Stanley Communications for safety and security reasons, along with bus driver communications at a cost of $3,958.70.
What, what we have with those is the radio that I currently use, I monitor the buses in the afternoon, I get a machine gun-like static probably, that ranges from five to 10 seconds long, probably anywhere from 10 to 15 times in two hours. Well, what we found out is that those license, FCC license for that frequency, that radio's program, don't have that license. So somewhere else, there's something that's causing that static. And what they told us from Stanley's is that it could be anything like, for example, golf courses that have automated watering. There might be signals sent back and forth to turn the sprinklers on, turn them off. It could be.
Oh my gosh.
Gas utility readings, uh, you know, it could be anything. I'm not getting any voices or anything. Anyway, we found that out. They came out, they checked our antennas, they checked our repeaters, everything was in good shape. Really, all we need is, is radio for, so to be able to communicate with the buses in the afternoon. And then we were talking with our resource officer and Doug and Debbie, some, we have really no communication with the playground aids and then just for safety. So we, we got the nine, there would be one in each office with the secretaries, one with each building principal, school nurse, school resource officer, superintendent's office, central office, because if there is a lockdown, sometimes over there, we don't know that. So, and they're, they're quality radios and they'll be on, on the frequency that is ours.
So the ones that the buses have will work with the ones that are going to comply with that?
So those are good, okay.
And we are, I think, pretty sure PTO is considering donating maybe $2,000 toward the purchase of this, so.
Wow.
They were pretty excited about that, yeah.
Do you have a meeting, Michael?
We're looking also at purchasing a Raptor system, but I never had done it 15 years ago as well. The Raptor system upgraded in here, it costs for a month. I think you have to buy a new repairment, it's going to be a 20 or more days, so much longer. So very much looking, taking a little science as far as to.
Great.
Great. That's great, okay.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that the board approve the quotes received for asphalt sealing, coating, striping, um, C attachment, and award the contract to Everbright Inc. at a cost of no more than $35,000.
Everbright is right here, local in New Jackson. Um, we, we met with them, they took, the only thing, the reason we worded it that way, no more than 35,000, their bid came out to be at 35,000 or slightly under that. What we're looking at is possibly, if you remember last summer, we used the crack sealing machine that Berlin Township had, and at a much reduced cost, we're able to do the majority of them. There are a few that popped up this winter and then some that we need to just kind of redo. So that would be 3,500 less than the quote if, if we get to do that, it would be cheaper than $3,500 to do that with the township. I know that Dave Gormes has initially talked to Kevin Windham on that.
You had one other bid?
Yeah, there was another bid from a company, the driveway company in Poland, and total was 41,250.
Wow.
And it was 38,000 to clean and seal the parking lot, and then striping was another 3250 for a total of 41,250. And this price from Everbright includes the striping afterwards for the parking areas.
Oh wow.
So about.
Good difference.
Yeah, five to 10,000 dollar, that's a cheap price. And we're trying to, going to try to schedule that around the 4th of July when our activities are, are down and we, I mean, we can still easy enough move traffic with the gates that we have and block roads, but just that much less here with the fall scores starting, we're kind of in that downtime, trying to get that done at that time.
Obviously, uh, baseball, they're, they're about done, about done.
Yeah, usually by around then. We'll, we'll talk to them and see. We should be able to cordon off any areas that we need to, so that's the plan.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended to add Kathryn Hollabaugh to the certified substitute list.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes. Motion carried. It is recommended that Jason Cochrane be hired as a strength and conditioning coach for April, May, and June as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved. I'll second.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Motion carried. It's recommended that Edward Anthony be hired as the assistant varsity football coach for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that Andrew Whitmer be hired as an assistant varsity football coach for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that Robin Hillis be hired as the high school cheerleading coach for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried. It is recommended that Christine Capabianca be approved as an unpaid volunteer high school cheerleading coach for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes. Motion carried. Dendam. It is recommended that the board hired Kitcha Derrickson for the three-hour reserve building janitor position effective April 14th, 2016, as per the salary schedule in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
It is recommended that the board approve the 2015-2016 school year Mahoning County inter-agency agreement between the Mahoning County Educational Service Center and Western Reserve Local Schools regarding provisions of services for children with disabilities from birth through age five.
So this is preschool, it's just through the, the county.
Oh, okay, it's for preschool, okay.
If you have a preschool student who's identified with special needs.
Gotcha.
Rather than the cost being absorbed just by us, it's.
Because this is kind of new, is now, I remember.
We've, we've done it every year, much earlier that we.
That gets new to the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I don't remember it, so.
Yeah, we just, all the schools in Mahoning County together on that, it was part of the ESC.
I'll second it, Rick first did it, whoever.
First, first did it, Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mrs. Potts?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Make you laugh.
Motion carried.
Thirded.
Building principal report. Who wants to lead off?
Hello.
Hi Debbie.
Hello.
Yeah, it's starting to ramp up and we're getting, I can't believe it's April, I can't believe we're already in the queue for last night's end of it, it's gone by fast. We ended right before Easter vacation, we had a great time with Cozi, the Easter bunny even hopped on in and passed out candies, that was awesome. And we came back and it's been, you know, this is testing month, we've been, we started, we start our testing in the elementary school next week. And we're, we're opting for two days for each test, just because it's intense and we figured to give the kids the best chance possible, we'll do two days for each. We have a lot of field trips coming up, fifth grade went to skate zone and they did physics, it was pretty cool. April Davis, she showed me pictures and things, and they were actually taking skates and building ramps and doing all kinds of neat things. So it was kind of nice up in clothes. We have a couple of different ones going on now, we've got somebody going in, beginning of May, so the Planet Earth and Butler. But we also, I want you to note that we also have a lot of things that come into the school. In Youngstown Historical Society, I have some suitcase suitcases, we, we order those and they come in and they do presentations with them. Mrs. Ricardi comes in and reads to the children puppets. So we have a lot of other things that are coming into school. We partnered this year with Cleveland Museum of Natural History and brought, we actually did that Skyping session where they had, we, the kids had kits and they used the kits for the artifacts. And then we, we actually, they could actually see the person from Cleveland Museum and they were walking them through and teaching them. It was all via like teleconference.
That's cool.
So yeah, there's, there's so much more. I went to a meeting today and there was so much technology and so many useful ways to use it, not just for the kids to be typing, but just for them to integrate it into the curriculum. So we'll be doing some more of that this year and that, that's pretty exciting. So the beginning of May, we'll start Special Persons Week and that's always a fun week to do. And then a couple of things we're doing curricular-wise, we had our meeting, we took, Doug and I took representatives from each wing and we trained them and we used the Cali, which is at Ohio Center for Autism and Low Incidence. And then it fits perfectly into our positive behavior instructional support team because it's creating positive spaces for students. Not always our bright classroom is the best place for students. That's for kids with attention deficit, sensory disorders, that's way too much for those kids to handle. So we're trying to like reinvent spaces, we're learning about sensory areas for these kids who get overstimulated to be able to go and kind of cool, cool down, chill out right in the classroom. We're just learning strategies and then the thing that we're really, and this is something I truly believe in, is, you know, kids are born kids. And when they, when things go wrong academically, behaviorally, something happened, I mean, there's something going on and we have to drill back and sometimes those are long conversations or big conversations on, let's like dig down and find the trainers, what's going on with this child? And so we're really, that was one of the things that Wendy Cisax from O'Callaghan came in and started working with this team. We're going to train all the teachers in this in August. So it's a really good way, it's a, it's a pretty scientific way to look at what's going on, you know, what's going on with these children? And that's the way that you fix it. So anyway, that's a start. And I just wanted to go over with you because I think it's important for you to know, because you'll hear from the public, what happens when a child does struggle? So we start out and if the teacher sees a child struggling or if we see him, we come together as a child study and we look at them, the child, we look at all the different pieces and we try some things. And then we call the parent in and we have the intervention assistance team where we work with the parent and we build a program for that child. It might mean working with an intervention specialist, let's see what's going to work for them. It might mean pulling the speech pathologist in. We're really just trying some different things to see what works. Sometimes it's just a maturity thing and we get them over that hump and they're good. Sometimes it doesn't work that way and sometimes we need to really look at the way they learn and so we do a little bit more testing, more direct testing and we bring, and we bring the school psychologist in and some different people, sometimes the occupational therapist. And we bring them in and we put a plan together and our goal is to get that child remediated and get them back into that regular classroom, well, they're always in the regular classroom, but get them back on track as soon as possible. So just so you know, kind of what our plan is going out when we have kids that struggle because we're getting more and more of them like that. And part of it's because the curriculum is very different now than it used to be, so.
Thank you for what you do though Debbie. You're very exciting and you make it exciting and you relay it well to us.
Oh, good.
And I don't think you're ever told thank you.
Well, you're welcome, I love doing it.
We appreciate it. I mean, you just, you look at different avenues and look at different things and I sit here sometimes and I shake my head and, and I don't think we ever tell you thank you.
Well, you're very, you're very welcome, I love doing it. That's kind of what, that's what I like so much about it and so, you know, they're all, they all make me smile. And what, you know what, when I'm having a really bad day, I'm in the class, I'm not usually in my office, right?
I was saying, you're looking at me.
Yeah, I'm not usually in my office, not at all. I'm usually, I love being with the kids, so.
She's hard to find.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Well, you are.
Much appreciated.
Yes, yes.
Hard to find in a good way.
Yeah, yeah.
How's it she's hiding?
I used to.
Glad to clarify that.
See that. We also met with Monday Ben Shaw and Sean Sitch from the county office.
Yes.
To talk about, we were all along, we've been talking about new math programs, we're looking at, and we're looking at some new programs four through eight. And we've looked at some that are really everyday math, contemporary.
Carnegie?
Yeah.
Carnegie?
Carnegie, I said Carnegie. Carnegie, everyday math, looking at numbers, and where those are being taught at. And we're, right now, we're looking at sending our groups to two different places, Hudson and Soul, which are teaching the everyday math and teaching some, we can't find anybody teaching Carnegie.
Right, so we're, we're looking, that's a.
If we find it, BD is in South Beach or Arizona, so.
Do you need board members to do it? I think you need people to follow.
We always recommend board members.
Yeah, so we've met with those guys and we're looking at the pieces of where it goes. Springfield offers some of it, there's some, a couple other places.
United.
So it's a kind of math, it's a type of math?
Yeah, it's a program. What we, what we don't have right now, it's, our teachers are hardworking people, we have hardworking teachers, but they're out scouring for things and they're designing their own things, which they can still do. But the bottom line is, they, they are working very hard and there's, but it's, it's not always cohesive. So these programs are cohesive, they can still fit things in. And, you know, you're going to hear the word conceptual, that's what it is. And when I, when they explained it to me, I said, wow, you guys are finally catching on with science. Because really, it's teaching the kids, giving them some background knowledge and then letting them explore. Some kids learn better that way, where you actually pick up things and they go, oh my gosh, they're filling a box with these cubes and they're like, oh, I get it, we don't have to count, you know, 84 cubes. We can, like, there's the same number up as across and they make connections, but you also have a lot of teacher guidance. And so we're looking at K to two and, or K to three and then four to eight. And so really, the programs kind of marry themselves and they, they, they go from one so we know that they're going to get those underlying skills that they need to build on. And it was funny because Ben Shaw is from the county, he's our consultant and Sean Sitch is our consultant, but he's the math guy. The next day, this woman shows up on my doorstep with these big everyday math kits for every grade level and she said, Ben called me and said that you guys want to look at our program. So I'm going to have her come in, talk the stat, I just set them out on the tables, a little teaser, and then they can, um, they can, they can dig into them. And what our goal is, is to pilot next year, we'll pilot, um, two, two different programs next year.
Just to see.
How they like it.
Give the kids a different view of things, not the math investigations, but it's, it's a lot of it is the hands-on, conceptual.
And that's when they pick it up, when they don't even know they're learning. Right. You know, they feel like they're getting a break and they're really not.
Be something a little different.
Um, one thing that, one real key component, I'm going to, I've emailed the principal at United, she, they've had it there for five years with great success. And one of my big questions is how do we get our community? Because this is different. So I'm going to work with her on that community engagement we're starting, I have my, I have a meeting coming up for, for the advisory board and I'm going to introduce it to them. And I, and so I want parents to go through trainings too. I want them to be an integral part of this, our community has to be a part of this, so it's not a negative because it is different than what we learned, but it's okay. Because you know what, the whole is different.
I think it's smart to involve the parents because it's hard to help your kids at home, even younger, younger, younger. Before it was high school, now it is hitting more middle school where they're coming home with terms we've never heard.
And my goal is.
You know, I mean, and so it's. Or ways to, a process to do it and I. Right, so we want to help them and not hurt them, you know, we want to.
And my goal is actually to get a good parent connection going. So when Jane Smith calls you, you can say, oh, no, wait a minute, this is what we can do. So, and really having parents connect with each other because there's so many of us and we're happy to do whatever we can, but if those parents can connect and parents can teach parents, wow, what a powerful thing that would be.
Yeah, really.
I'm also, I've nominated Kelly Richards and Kevin Conley to do the Martha Holden Jennings, Martha Holden Jennings program up in Cleveland in the summertime. It's a two-day program, they can pick up a lot of good ideas, Chrissy used one before. Just gives you a lot of different lessons that you can pick up and try and use with your kids depending on age level. So I've nominated both them, will hear probably in the next month or so if they get selected or not. And Martha Holden Jennings picks up the whole cost of everything.
Oh wow.
Including their hotel rooms, everything. It'll be a nice, nice thing for them to get involved with that. As Debbie said, testing, we started last Thursday and Friday with our English Language Arts ninth and 10th grade, we have 23 straight days of testing.
Wow.
How could it be testing, so. And in the midst of that, we're doing the junior high kids and then her kids will come in a little bit later, so we're utilizing every, every space we have for testing because you're doing it all on computer. But Monday was algebra and then we had junior high, the sixth grade. English Language Arts first day was just killer. It was, it was vocabulary, it was so fun. It was in the directions, which we knew and we've been working on that. But when the kids see it the first time, they kind of freak out. And our kids don't have a lot of, our sixth graders down, I don't think have a lot of typing ability. They're more this, they're not so much this.
Oh, yeah.
Especially when it comes to testing. So that's something we're going to look at next year, see if we can do in the curriculum, get a few more things in there where we can get those kids to learn at least how to type before they get to that age of where they're.
Is there keyboarding classes gone?
We have, we have a computer app, we have a computer business class at the high school level. We have a sixth grade computer and seventh grade computer. But we really.
Once a week we do, once a week we do, every grade level, once a week, there's a computer lab and our tutors work with them on keyboarding, generating Google Docs, because that's really kind of what they're using, our documents. They, they know how to open, save things, they're starting to use for the older kids, um, online tools. Like, how do you find your calculator? It was funny, I had a little boy in my office the other day, he was having trouble with math. He's having trouble with a lot of things, that's why he was in my office. He was looking at math and he, he was looking and he was trying to, he was trying to um, figure something out and he goes, wait a minute. And he pulls, I don't even know where it came from, got this calculator and this ruler showed up on his computer screen. And so they're knowing exactly how to use it now. So they're pulling, they're pulling things and they are teaching them that, you know, you think about a kindergartner, like, you know, twenty-three kindergartners sitting in a computer lab and they're, they're keyboarding and doing all these things. And that's great, it's a really good concept and you have two people in there, it's tough. I mean, just putting their, learning their password and putting their username, we use room number for username and their password, that's tough. They're little people, you know? And it's not games that they're doing at home. We're actually technical writing. That was the other thing the fourth grade teachers are very concerned about is during these tests, we don't have time to write a rough draft out. They have to compose, which is, it's a talent. You compose from your brain, write to the computer, so they have to type, they can't write and correct. They have to type right from their, from their mind, they have to create in their mind and type it directly on the computer. They don't have time to sketch things out. So it's teaching them different ways, like she's teaching them to do one sentence outlines. One sentence for each thought because we know we have to have a five paragraph essay. So we're like, what's your opening line going to be? Or what's your opening paragraph, what's the just about going to be? And just jotting down five sentences. And that's how they organize, which is a whole different way of organizing. So those are the things we're kind of dealing with with these tests. They have to go straight from their brain, they don't have time to create and they don't have time to revise and edit either really, so, yeah.
It's just sad.
In between that, I'm doing the scheduling of the kids in the lab. So we did sophomores today, Marvin, freshmen, which will be next year's sophomores. Uh, so we're doing that in between all the different testing. So it's a full month, all the way till May, May thirteenth is the end of the testing. So we'll be doing testing at that point. A couple of events that are coming up, next Friday is the Spring Band Concert at six o'clock on the twenty-second. Our Planet Earth kids will be going to the Pittsburgh Zoo on April twenty-seventh. That's a yearly trip that they take. Prom will be on April twenty-ninth at Firestone Farms.
Oh, wow.
Be, we tried to move it around different places last year, the Antunes this year. We're going to be at Firestone Farms and next year we're looking at Youngstown State Department. Something a little different, we'll look at. May fourth, the Simone County Art Show, which starts at six o'clock and goes till seven-thirty if anyone's interested. That's at the Career Center. The Choir Concerts, May twelfth, there's a lot of things coming up before the next quarter, so. That's at six-thirty. Jazz Band Concert will be May nineteenth, I think which is the night of the next meeting. That'll be at six o'clock as well, so a lot of different events coming up. In between, trying to do everything else academically, we're doing all these other things too. Keep it busy.
Okay, Tower?
Um, okay, um, as it's kind of already been said about testing, um, the, the one comment that I would have about that is, well, first off, unlike last year, I keep pressure on all of our kids who were taking the algebra tests this year. Um, last year, I don't know if you remember, maybe the last board meeting, I think, I spoke about that and kind of told the kids, hey, relax, you know, it doesn't count this year and all that stuff. And then, you know, we got burned basically. So this year, I like doubled the pressure on them, said, look, it's all on you. You want to graduate, do well, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, it was maybe a little overkill, but still, you know, they, they need to feel, you know, some pressure and, you know, obligation to that, so. Um, the one thing that I would say about, uh, basically this window of testing that happened. And I, and basically I'm speaking for, um, I'll speak for most, if not all, teachers who are affected by this testing. Basically, since everything is on the computer, you know, we're limited to the amount of computers we have. So we have to start testing basically in April, okay? When that happens, you know, some students or let's say some classrooms have a whole month more to teach, you know, before their test happens, okay, so that makes it difficult. For me, if I had my way, which I don't, but if I had my way, I'd go right back to, um, paper testing. And then you can have it all in, you know, in a few days and be done with it, okay? I'm all for technology, don't get me wrong, but the thing is, is when it comes to testing, it becomes, um, to me, a small nightmare. You know, because now you don't have that much tree of that extra time and stuff. You're jamming this information in these kids' heads and they, they struggle with it anyways if you have a normal period of time of teaching and that, so.
It'd just be nice if they could shorten them, you know, I mean, if they could just get like a little glimpse, you know, in each department if it didn't have to be so intense. You know what I mean?
Especially with, with mathematics, it's very difficult. You have to write an equation, okay? You now have to go into some kind of symbols menu and you've got to find multiplication, division, whatever the symbol is. And then you move on to the next number and all that. And whenever you have the square root or the, you know, the raised to some kind of exponent or whatever, it becomes very cumbersome. And when you're on timed tests and that, it just doesn't work.
And if you're like me, you need pens on paper just to work it out. So you're rewriting the problem and working it out and then, I mean, what it.
Well, in, in like, uh, some of my classes, especially like physics class, um, I have told, uh, because designing on the computer happens, okay? But many designs and many ideas and that just happen on napkins. I mean, literally, you know, napkin design, here it is, what do you think?
Scrap paper.
You know, scrap paper, whatever. And the thing is, is that, um, we've gotten into this testing now to where it's very cumbersome for the kids. You know, as, you know, it's been mentioned already about keyboarding and that, um, you know, that's an added obstacle.
They're nervous already.
Well, the thing is, is are we testing them on how well they use the keyboard and the computer program? Or are we testing them on what they know?
Curriculum.
And what their, yes, curriculum, you know, their logic, all that stuff. And they have this other hurdle, I don't, you know, traditionally we've done quite well here. But I think that that has become a bit of an hindrance, I hate to say it, you know?
Absolutely.
A downer here, but. Okay, so negotiations, those are going to start very soon. We're pretty much ready, we just have to set up some dates, start getting into that. I think, I think it could go smoothly. We have much more than that, we're excited for the end of the year's coming. And actually, my students are actually responding quite well. My students, not in anybody else's classrooms, but I've not heard of any problems, so. Even the seniors haven't really gotten a very strong case of senioritis that I've seen, so that's a good thing.
Well, it's just now starting to get sunny though.
Right, that, you know, the sun, the sun is good and bad.
Couple more days like this.
Yeah, we need some snow if I want them to pay attention.
At least rain, gloom and doom.
Yeah, that's all I.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jeff, any additional comments?
I got a couple of things for you, a little bit more data. If you noticed or have seen on the report card, one of the areas that is soon to be scored is prepared for success. How, how well the students are prepared for success. And, um, there's a lot of different factors that go into that measurement. Right now, some of the things that we have in place and what I did was I compared, you know, there's nine schools on this list as far as where we compare with some similar schools. And what I put, the, the numbers there are percentages. And then in parentheses is where we kind of rank compared to those nine schools that we're talking about here. ACT participation, that's how many kids took the ACT test. You know, one of the, a critical measurement is the remediation free score. In other words, and I put those scores at the bottom, anybody with a twenty-two or higher in math is considered by the colleges to be remediation free. Twenty-one in English or an eighteen in reading. So, you know, we're at almost a third of the kids that take the ACT are remediation free. So, you know, there's some discussion, you know, what are the, what are the colleges doing about that? Because, um, somebody pointed out, I think typically the college graduation rate for high schools in four years were ninety-some percent. College is around fifty percent. So, you know, it's almost like, okay, what are you, what are you guys doing to make sure these, these college students graduate too? Um, as you can see, we're very, very high up there with the amount of dual credit courses that we offer. That helps for that prepared for success and the rating is going to be some points. The Mahone County ESC is writing a straight A grant and I've kind of passed along some of the stuff to Doug to be part of that. Some of the things that include the, um, industry credentialing, I guess I should back up to the honors diploma. And you can see where, you know, we've always pushed that and, uh, you know, the four years of English and, uh, the advanced sciences. So you can see that's kind of paid off in the long run. We're, we're tops in those areas for the kids that are, um, getting honors diplomas. The industry credential, basically right now, the only ones that get that are kids that go to vocational school. Because that's part of their program. So that's where the big push is going to be, is the ones that stay here, getting them some type of industry credentialing. And that's what the straight A grant through the county is going to be focusing on. There are some online course options. We already are part of Fuel Ed, which is an online, uh, more, we've used it more as a remedial tool or make up credit, credit recovery. But they're going to start doing some things on air. In fact, I just saw a thing, came across the email and I didn't read it, um, to where they're looking at passing laws that students all be, uh, like CPR trained. There's some courses that they're talking about doing online where like an OSHA safety job, credentialing, um, you know, to where that, that's good for anybody. You know, so some of those kind of things are part of this, this package that we're, we're looking at utilizing with the ESC. So just some, some comparisons there. And then to take some of that a step further, um, this is a breakdown of the, that remediation free percentage that we have. And, um, as you can see, uh, what that figure means, and I have us on, on number one for the math, thirty-three percent of our kids that take the ACT are remediation free in math. And you can see that figure compared to others throughout the county and in the area. So that's actually the highest percentage of remediation free kids of the tri-county area. And then the next page is English and you can see we're down a little bit on English, still at that thirty-three percent. But, um, you can see some of the other schools have, have a, uh, the, I'm sorry, I think I said that wrong. The thirty-three percent for math is the percentage of kids that need remediation.
Oh, okay.
It's a little.
Lower is better.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Oh, okay.
The lower the number, the better you're doing.
Oh, because I'm looking at this and thinking.
Yeah, right. And then, um, with the English, you can see we're still at about thirty-three percent, meaning English remediation. But typically, English, English and reading scores are usually a little bit higher than, than math. So doing a good job with the math and, uh, you know, we need to pick it up just a little bit in the, in the reading and more specifically in the English Language Arts where you can see some of the discrepancies there. Just some more data that we're compiling and putting together for, um, some of the curriculum needs and some things we need to look at.
Any thoughts on, you know, what, what other districts might be doing different while we're scoring where we are in, in English?
You know, it's so hard, I know, you know, we've talked about, um, we have a, a fair number of, of, not that their scores are going to be low, but a fair number of special ed kids that take the ACT, plans to go to college.
But how do we score as high as we do in math? The same population group?
Yeah.
You know what, Ryan, um, I know that in the elementary school, there are many kids in the elementary that they are, they qualify for, um, intervention, which is special education in reading and English, reading and writing, but they do not qualify in math, even in the elementary grades. If you look at our, if you look at our special ed numbers, they, we have, I mean, the Language Arts and Reading is much higher than the math.
Oh, it's harder.
Yeah, it is.
No math.
The math is, it's, um, if you look at what the, if you look at the, the standards, it's higher level math at a younger age. And so they, it just takes, sometimes it just takes them, I mean, it's higher level reading and writing at a younger age. And so the writing, they're, they're building skill, but they're not as focused on the skill as they are on like text evidence and things like that. And so they're really going into concept development. And so we put a lot of extra in there and I, I think it's starting to show now. And it, that's the standards, uh, that we're doing. But it's, it's much higher level, it's a frustration point and it's to the point now where you're seeing, and that's one thing we're working on, is you're seeing kids that don't love to read because it's so high level and it's so technical now. It's, they don't have, just, they have some pleasure reading, but it's, a lot of it's, it's required reading because of the kind of reading they have, so.
I guess the thing I'll say is, you know, there, there's always the element of, of population base. But when I, when I look at where we're at in math and I look at where we're at in English and, and reading in comparison, I, I think, I'd like to see some real deep evaluation. I'd like to see some cross comparison with other school districts that have scored well and some more concrete answers back on what we're going to do different next year. Any other comments from the board?
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's putting all the other test data together.
Yeah, I think.
And sometimes too, with, and again, with percentages, you know, when we have seventy-two percent taking ACT, well, seventy-two percent of the class of sixty is forty, forty-five kids. And then when, you know, a third of them.
Yeah, the numbers, the numbers are usually skewed.
So we're talking fifteen kids who took the ACT that need remediation, but still.
That messes with our percentages when you think about it.
Right, I want to think as well, we broke that down, let's talk for the English now. So we're focusing more on specific reading and specific skills. So we kind of broke that down now, so we're not trying to get it all at one time, doing it for a semester, so we'll get there.
Well, I think it'd be interesting to look at what's being tested within the ACT English component, you know? So, all right, thank you.
Um, also, I have updated and will, these are just drafts, but we can approve these at the next meeting, the K to five principal job description and the six to twelve principal job description. So you can look those over if there's anything you see. Doug and Debbie had looked at them.
So we can add a bunch of stuff?
Um, what's that? Oh, I had a bunch of.
She's not even listening.
There's anything on there that you, uh, you know, you have a question on, whatever, like I said, we'll just, we'll have them ready to be adopted at the, uh, at the next board meeting. And then about the only thing left that we really need to look at is the guidance. And they're coming out with new guidance evaluation frameworks, so I'd rather wait until they've got that out.
Makes sense.
I've kind of tied these in with the O P E S evaluation for principals and some of the things that they need to do. Doug had mentioned the art show, these are actual invitations with the information about the art show for you. And kind of a feel-good, nice thing, our band was at a, uh, um, not a competition, but like a simulated competition. And thought this was a nice letter from the director of bands at Teal College. Commenting them on their, their performance at that, uh, I believe this was the one that was at the, um, I can't remember if this was at Howland or at Hubbard, I know they played at both. This might have been the one at Hubbard.
I love Teal College.
But that was kind of nice.
That is, he didn't have to do that.
Right.
I love them. That's very nice, even take the time to do that.
Yeah, that says something about him too.
Yep.
That's nice.
It is nice.
That's all I have for this next session, negotiations.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second, or firsted.
I firsted.
Altered, alteredated. Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt?
Yes.